I'd like to welcome everyone to the meeting of the Garden City Zoning Board of Appeals. This is Wednesday, February 28, 2024, and it's 6:30 PM. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and first order of business, if everyone would stand to say pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would Secretary take the roll call, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Here.
Commissioner Richard.
Present.
Commissioner Hickman.
Present.
Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Martin. Commissioner Bullock.
Here.
We have a quorum of five.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll...
Motion made and supported. Any questions or comments on the motion? You take the roll, please.
Commissioner Hickman.
Present.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Price.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Approval of minutes from the regular meeting of June 28, 2023. We need a motion.
Which one was it?
Pardon me?
I didn't hear that, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes for the regular meeting of June 28, 2023.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve the minutes on June 28, 2023. Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any comments or questions on the motion? You take the roll, please.
Commissioner Price.
Yes.
Commissioner Hickman.
Aye.
Mr. Bullock.
Aye.
Commissioner Richard.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Okay, next item of business is public comment on non-agenda items only. If there's someone here who wishes to comment on an item that's not on the agenda tonight, this would be the time to stand and come up to the podium and address the board. Seeing no one, we can move on. Two business items. Our first business item is 30254 Ford Road, consideration of a request for one-dimensional variance from the minor auto repair facility requirements of section 154.137, paragraph C. To start us off, could we have the presentation of the consultant's report?
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everyone. As noted, this is regards to 30254 Ford, so the northeast corner of Ford and Henry Ruff. Currently, it's occupied by a one-story commercial building and associated parking for the Hollywood Sound Auto Repair. It's mainly located on the south half of the site. The northern half is an unoccupied vacant area currently. So the applicant is proposing to construct a new minor auto repair building for Hollywood Sound on the northern portion of the lot. They would then, after construction, demolish the existing structure on the south and then construct a new multi-tenant commercial building along the Ford Road frontage. So this use is classified as a minor auto repair facility, and the cited zoning ordinance section does require that these facilities have at least a 40-foot setback from any residentially zoned or used property. So the applicant is before you because they are proposing that this building be located 22 feet from the northern property line that is shared with a residence. So this request is for an 18-foot variance from the standard. You have our review letter dated February 20th that goes over the various criteria of the zoning ordinance that you can use to determine if a variance is warranted. And I'm just going to point out some highlights. The first being, one of the more important considerations is a practical difficulty exists. That is, if compliance with the strict letter of this restriction would be unnecessarily burdensome to the property owner. Compliance with this section, with this standard, would require the building to shift further to the south. This would, in theory, minimize the amount of area available for additional commercial development on the site. And then the inability to use the site for additional commercial development, that actually could be viewed as a practical difficulty. As proposed in front of you, the site plan does show the amount of parking necessary for that commercial multi-tenant building and the auto repair facility. And so we just note that, you know, the size of, the overall size of this property, 33,000 square feet, would seem to indicate that it should be capable of handling more than just a 2,700-square-foot building, more than just the minor auto repair. So granting the variance would allow that additional commercial development, and in theory, could be considered a practical difficulty by complying with that setback. One other thing we note is that there are, there is a location of overhead lines going through the site from east to west. And those impacts, it could be a minor determination that they would impact the site negatively because it impacts the alternative building configurations that could occur on site. That's one of the reasons that the building is being proposed fronting on Ford Road. Those overhead lines could be moved, but chances are, if they were to be moved, they would probably be moved closer to the residence to the north. So as proposed, this is a configuration based on that current location of the utility lines. One other impact we look at is substantial justice. That is, whether granting of the variance for, would allow the developer, excuse me, the property owner, the same rights as other property owners in the area. And other property owners of similar size and scale, notably the other properties on Ford Road, north of Ford Road between Henry Ruff and Brandt, they have been fully developed, all the way to, you know, their northern property line shared with the adjacent residences. So it could be construed that, you know, allowing the variance would allow this develop, this property owner to use their site fully in the same characteristics as other commercial properties have been in this particular block. One other thing is that we look at to see if granting the variance would follow the intent of this dimension requirement. You know, the intent of the setback is to minimize impact on residents. Having a 40-foot setback was deemed by the planning commission to be what's necessary to minimize those impacts of a minor auto repair on additional residents. However, based on the proposed configuration, it could be construed that the granting of the variance would allow for, would still meet that intent of minimizing the impact on the residents because, as proposed, the building would have overhead doors facing Ford Road, so they would not face towards the residence. And in fact, the walls on the northern side of the building and on the east and west side would all be solid, unless there's any requirement of the building code, which I don't believe there is, but they would not be, there would not be any openings that would allow for noise to travel northbound towards the adjacent residence or westbound towards the adjacent resident on the other side of Henry Ruff. So in theory, you could, it could be construed that granting the variance still meets the intent of the ordinance by minimizing the impact on residences because of the configuration. We also note that granting the variance, we don't think, would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, mainly because, as noted already, a lot of the commercial properties, all the commercial properties on Ford Road on this, on this block have already been fully developed. There's actually even one property that goes beyond that and is, has an outdoor storage yard that's directly adjacent on the east and west side to one apartment building and another single-family residence. So in this block, we've actually had commercial property go up to and even into the residential area. So granting this variance would not be any different than other properties. One thing we do note is that this proposal also would allow for the possibility of, the applicant is proposing a green space in that 18, in that 22 feet between the building and the property line. While that's effective and that's more attractive than other commercial property, because once again, they're fully developed to the property line, you know, this applicant in theory could have, could reorient or have some of the property to the north be occupied by asphalt and by parking. They're proposing a landscape, they're proposing right now, grass. However, we do think there's also a possibility to further minimize the impacts by possibly having additional landscaping in that 22-foot buffer. It could be further minimizing that impact by having some evergreen trees planted that would minimize that further, the impacts due to the proximity of the building to the residence. So in the end, we find that the ZBA, you could determine that the proposed development meets the requirements for a variance approval. With that, I can take any questions throughout the evening that you or anyone may have.
Well, why don't we hold the board's discussion and questions till after the public hearing? And at this time, we'll move on to the presentation by the applicant. Is the applicant present?
Hello, my name is Kristin Halaf. I am the design engineer for this project. Thank you very much for the presentation, Mario. I just want to add something. I present, I have here like option one, which is the one that we're presenting right now, the one with the ZBA request, and option two, the one that does not need ZBA approval. I'm just, I'm just gonna hand it to you and I just want to apply a little bit more.
Thank you.
So you're saying that option two...
Option two does not need ZBA approval.
That has a 40-foot setback?
It has a 40-foot setback.
Okay, thank you.
So what I'm trying to do is trying to compare the one that I needed ZBA approval versus the one that does not need ZBA approval. First of all, from a screening standpoint, option two, which is the one that does not need the ZBA, will have the door opens to the residential area, the garage doors open to the residential area, versus option one, which it will be completely shielded from, by the building itself. Now, the building itself, the north, east, and west wall, all of these will be solid block, will not have any opening. So it will be zero impact on the residential area. Also, as Mario stated, that we are willing to landscaping and put all the trees that's needed and required to shield the residential area. Option, option one also provide some kind of screening for the, for the parking area. If you go to option two, the parking area is kind of exposed to the residential area versus option, option one with the ZBA approval. The third thing is the trash enclosure. Trash enclosure is kind of open to the residential area in option two versus it's shielded in option, in option one. Also, like from, from economical standpoint for, for the owner, it's, it's the same Hollywood Sounds, the owner is the same one who's going to occupy that building. So kind of like if we go with option two, it's kind of tucked in behind the building that we're proposing on the front, so it will not be seen from the traffic on Ford Road versus the one with the, the option, option one. The last point I want to mention that it is, it's going to be occupied by the owner, Mr. Nasser. He, he does like install sound systems, so even though it's approved for auto repair, he is not going to do anything outside of his, of the store, first of all. Second, it's very, very minor auto repair. It's like, they don't have any, they don't produce any noise or they are not producing any kind of pollution to the, to the neighborhood. I'm done.
You're done, okay. Well, thank you. You'll have a seat. Okay, moving on. I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:47. If there's anyone here who would like to speak concerning this proposal, would you come up to the podium and introduce yourself and tell us what your comments are?
Yes, my name is Brian Shockley, and I own the property north of the field that we're talking about. I have a lot of concerns with the proposal that I saw, thanks to Mario there. I've got a chance to look at the proposal now. I see there's another one on the table, which I had not seen. And I'm going to try to bring some of these things to head. Maybe you can answer them now. What is the purpose for the owner that wants to do this, of moving it 18 feet closer to my property? What is the purpose of that? When I look at the drawing, he's got plenty of room where, if you leave that 40-foot variance.
I believe on option A that he's doing this to provide space for parking.
Well, according to the drawing, and Mario, can you give me an...
You want this one?
The one he just proposed to you?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is this, this is the number two? The number one?
By relocating the building, it provides more space for parking, and the building can be further away from your lot line.
Okay, and option one, the 18-foot variance, if I'm correct in saying, it's 18-foot, correct? Okay, so right now, we're looking at strictly option one? Since you all just got option two, and I just got it?
The only variance required by us would be for option one.
Okay.
That's what we're considering at this point.
Is this for me to keep, Mario?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, well, let me give you the issues that I have. And hopefully, you will see my point of view. Since you've told me what the purpose of the variation is, to move the building closer to my property, and I'm looking at the drawing now that I brought up to Mario, the drawing shows my arborvities, which are about 55 foot long. They're 20-some foot tall, and the reason I put them there was to stop the lights flashing, the song noise, trying to cut all of that down. When you either sit in your house or come out in your driveway to sit, talk, whatever, you have all this noise coming in your direction. So the arborvities that I put there are now since 96. They're quite tall, and they do help with the barrier. So I'm going to try to point out some things to you that the current owner is not too cooperative when I go up and talk to him about various things. So just imagine, you're me, living in that home. I'm constantly picking up garbage. I'm constantly picking up everything going up and down that field because I don't want it in my property. I don't, because it's a wind tunnel. Right now, the wind comes from the west, and everything blows into my backyard or up against my arborvities. I'm currently cutting my grass on, on the property line side, four to five foot, because I've asked him to tell his contractor to complete their job and not do it half-but. If that's, that's how I would go it. They go up there and they run up and down the field, and then they turn around and all the waste comes my direction. And I've said something to him, I've had our ordinance inspector over there threatening to ticket him because he doesn't do what he's supposed to do. So that's why I'm here now, saying, okay, you're getting ready to give him a variance, and he doesn't do what he's doing, supposed to do now. And we're constantly with the ordinance officer on him about things he doesn't do. Classic example, snow. He don't remove the snow on this section of property. I remove it. I remove it because we have handicapped people riding their carts in the street. I've had Mario talk to him a dozen times. When you have your snowman come over, whoever your contractor is, clean the sidewalk to the property line. That doesn't happen. So people don't walk there, they walk in the street because they fall. So I've been taking my four-stage blower and cleaning the sidewalk. These are things that I'm putting up with now, and I'm, I question why the 40-foot variance? Change. That makes him closer. So if he's not going to follow the rules now, what makes you think he's going to follow the rules when you're giving this variance? And I'm, I'm okay to compromise on anything, but I'd like to have some compromise of saying, when you start this, you live up to the rules. So he'll say, oh, yeah, I'm going to live up to the rules, and then when the building's done, I'm dealing with it. And I don't appreciate that at all. When I look at the noise level, in the summertime, when he opens up his doors in the current building that he's in, guess where it comes? It goes to Ford Road, but it also comes to me. You can sit on my deck and listen to the noise. So if you get him 40, within that 40-foot, it's still going to be bad. It's going to be worse than it is now. So picture yourself sitting on a deck, having a nice meal, and now you've got to deal with music that you don't care for. Because the guy who's fixing the stereo system's got it blasting. I understand it's a business, but I live there, too. So I'm looking at all of these things, and now I'm looking at option two. Option two is totally not good. Because now you're sitting in the building, the backside of the building, if I'm reading this correctly, correct me, Mario, if I'm wrong, the backside of the building is going to be facing family heating and cooling.
That's correct.
Okay. Family heating and cooling has a concrete wall on my property line. Family heating and cooling tries their best to stop the garbage from coming to my yard. That's another ordinance issue. So if you turn this building sideways, the noise level is going to go to the west, to the neighbor across the street, because that's their home. I hope you all are visualizing what I'm talking about, if you've traveled that area. When you turn this building around in option two, it's facing directly to the residence across the street. So I have a lot of objections to it. I'm also willing to understand that you all are trying to work with the owner, but right now, I'm reluctant to work with, with him at all because he doesn't follow the current rules. And it just makes it worse for me when he doesn't follow the current rules, and I'll give you some other ones. When you change it to the variance of 22 feet, I ask for additional landscaping. If that's your decision, I want more protection from the noise, the garbage, and everything else. Because when I look at his gondola placement, Mario, you correct me if I'm wrong, the current gondola placement that he's proposing, I'm going to get all the garbage. When they don't close the lids properly, oh, I'm going to close the lids. No, you don't. You don't close them now. You don't stuff them closed to where the garbage doesn't blow down the family heating and cooling fence line. I get it all. So I'm constantly picking up. I don't live in a dirty city. I don't want my property looking like a junkyard and trash everywhere. And that's where it comes, if I don't pick it up on a regular basis. The sound levels, this would be terrible if you changed it to number two. And again, I look at the drawing. Mario, is my correct that the current number one option, that's with the variance already in it?
The current number one, excuse me, the current number one would require the board to grant him the variance. Option two was shown because, as proposed, the configuration of option two does not require any variances. That only requires approval from the planning commission for construction.
Okay. Well, when you look at the two options, if you were going to do one or the other, I would opt for option one, because it does at least turn the building to the south towards Ford Road. But here's the other thing that you, you may not have considered. He's talking about building more, after he builds that building, he's going to tear the front one out and rebuild there. Guess where the noise level's going to go at that point? It's going to go south, hit his buildings up there, because it's going to be a whole bunch of buildings, and it's coming right back to me. It's going to be like a sound barrier to me. So that's why I'm proposing, if, if you go with option one, if that's your decision, I'd like to have some guarantees from the board here that this guy's going to follow the rules, because so far, he doesn't.
Okay, well, thank...
Answers, no, yes?
Well, we can't give you that answer right now.
No, but I'm talking about following the rules. I mean, it is, it's like...
Following the rules is not up to us. What you're talking about is having the ordinance officer enforce the rules.
Okay, but if you're getting ready to do this construction, he's going, oh, I'm going to enforce, I'm going to do the rules, but then I get to live with it, and I'm constantly calm, either winter or summer. So if you go with option one, which is when you look at both plans, it's a better option, because it does bring the doors in the direction of Ford Road. The, the variance itself is 12-foot?
18-foot variance, so that would be, the back of the building would be 22 feet from the property line.
I would suggest that if you're going to go with option one, that the variance be changed, that when I look at the frontage of his, where the bay doors are going to be, and the actual parking structure, I hope you all are following me there, there's enough room to decrease the variance. I'm looking at, I did some measuring out there, and I'm looking at 30-foot total. The back of his wall is 30 feet away from the property line.
Well, I believe that would create an issue with the lanes in the parking area.
According to the planner, no. There's plenty of room. I, I've done a lot of homework here, and I'm not trying to second-guess anybody, but you're only talking 18, you're talking eight-foot back, more. So that's not going to create a problem with the parking. There's plenty of radius. When you look at the radius, I'm correcting, it looks like to be 35.9. Is that right, Mario? Am I reading it right?
I think the, the distance between the edge of the parking and the front wall of the auto repair is that, is it 32 or 35?
35.
35, 35.9.
So you're only talking about taking off eight foot. That's more than enough room to turn in and out, because that's all you're doing, is turning in and out. It doesn't affect the parking spots. I mean, the better drawing of, of both, when I look at both of them real quick, the better drawing is this one here, number one. But I'm, I'm looking at, if I'm going to have to abide by the Urals ruling, which I'm fully able to do, then I'm going, I'm asking the board to change the variance a little bit. And then I want some guarantees of, to the landscape. That's what I do in the summer. I do a lot of landscaping for homes, and there's a lot of good landscape material out there that will stop the, the noise. Arborvities, you can buy any, big arborvities, and when you do commercial, you can buy them 10, 12-foot high, which that's a good height. I'm not talking about him saying, I'm going to do the landscape, and he puts out one footers. That, that ain't going to get it. If I'm going to have to eat a variance here, and it's up to you all, I mean, you all got rules that you have to live with, but I'm looking for additional landscape to stop the noise, one, two, the garbage, and three, the inability of him to abide by the rules. So if you put another row of arborvities there, or what they call Colorado Blues, or pines, heavy pines, it's, it'll stop a lot of that, okay? Which will still give us room between my property line and his building. But if you just have him, have him put his building up against the 22-foot variance and nothing there, then the wind tunnel is going to continue. And I mean wind tunnel, when you come down Crowler, that's the wind tunnel. It comes from the west, and I, I catch a lot of the garbage coming off the router, whether it's paper, cigarette butts, cans, whatever, and it blows up into my driveway entrance. So I, I'm battling things that it is what nature is, and I'm okay with some of it.
Okay, well, I think we understand how you feel about it, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am, would you come, come up, please? Identify yourself and sign in.
My name is Crystal Paulco. I'm a resident of Garden City and also the property owner next door at 30210 Ford Road, Family Heating and Cooling. Also a Garden City Public School teacher for 29 years. Retired now. So the property is currently listed for sale that we're talking about here. It is currently listed for sale. I have an open offer on the table. I have an open offer on the table. In excess of the listing price, cash. I've been negotiating with the owner since November. I think my question is answered here as I sit and listen. We have certain pro- plans for the property that would not involve any variance or to be anywhere near the neighbor's home. My question was going to be, is this request to facilitate the sale of the property that I have now spent thousands of dollars on because we were in good faith negotiation, and I had to get a a civil engineer just to see if it would suit what we're what we would propose? So I feel that this owner is very disingenuous as they negotiate with me and did not tell me this. I had to find out from the city. And it has been a long process. And I just wanted the board to know that. That, and I wanted to find out, was this? I I believe in the best in people. And I thought, oh, they're probably asking for this variance to facilitate this with us. I I had no idea. That's why I showed up tonight. So I don't feel that the owner is honest at all. And I feel like he's been stringing me along and wasting my time, energy, and money. And so I was just here to find out, what's going on? Where did this come from? So that is why I am here tonight. And I would just want to confirm the variance has nothing to do with the sale of the property, correct? It's Youssef Bedoin is your realtor?
If you don't mind, make all your comments to the board.
Oh, I apologize. I was just, I didn't know. I apologize.
Regardless, if they don't get the variance, they can go with option two and still build.
Right, but.
Without any further.
And I didn't know that. That's why I showed up tonight, just to find out, like, what's going on? I had no idea that. So I just feel like I've been toyed with. I don't know what the point of all of this is. And just came tonight.
I understand your situation.
Yep, just came to find out what was what was going on. And that and that's all.
Okay, well, thank you.
For your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this application?
Before moving forward, can I address Mr. Khalif?
Yes.
Is is there a reason why we we couldn't have any message from the owner or shop manager with intentions moving forward? Why they couldn't make it? Was it?
Why he didn't make it?
Yeah.
I will not be honest with you. I'm not.
Now the mentor, three two, three two one, three three.
No comment. But no excuse of of they just couldn't be here? They chose not to be here? I'm just curious of why we can't get an explanation of the the two different designs? And if we had any questions of them of the business moving forward?
Well, I'm I'm representing him in design for the design. So if you have any question, I can answer you.
Okay, six months from now, what's the business going to be?
This is, he wants to move to that. He wants, the Hollywood Sound wants to move to that building.
What does he plan on making the businesses in front?
Just retail, open for retail, whatever. Like, it could be shops, like any any open retail shops.
Does he have anything lined up?
No.
So then it's just gonna be barren until he finds something?
Exactly.
But on the paper, it says restaurants?
Well, that's, it's just, it's not all of our restaurants. I'm just putting it because wanna like like find out exactly what's the number of parking that's needed so we don't have a problem in the future.
So and then the movement of the property moving back is all just monetary? It's not to try and build up the property, make it look nicer? It's just for financial gain?
I don't understand the question.
But Hollywood has been there for quite some time. I don't know if it's been the same owner, but it's been the same business or in the same line for quite some time. That field's been vacant, almost like the field in the main street's vacant for years.
Right.
What has motivated the owner to move the same business back? Is it just for monetary gain? Or does he wanna beautify the city? What's the purpose of moving it now after all these years? And will it remain the same? Does he have intentions on staying? My biggest thing with it is, a year from now, that building, the way it's designed, becomes auto repair, like a true auto repair, where it's not audio, video, whatever they're doing. Now we have pneumatic tools, we have jets, we have all kinds of noise. And it'd be nice if we had the shop manager or owner to answer some of those questions.
Okay. So it's my understanding that he wants to occupy that building. And that's the main reason that he had so many offers, just not just the front family, heating and cooling. He had so many offers. But because he wants to stay within that business, he wants to keep his customers happy and open the business in the back and then just for the economic gain to have that front building.
Okay.
Just for your information, the site is zone C two. And minor auto repair is the only use that's permitted on the site. The major auto repair, where where vehicles are stored overnight and where there's activities such as transmissions, repair, body shops, those wouldn't be permitted in the district as it's currently zoned.
Oil change, tire shop, stuff like that would be minor, correct?
That is correct, though. That is correct. So oil change and tire shop, so, right, yeah. So that is true. Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this? All right, moving on then. Do we have any written communications concerning this?
Our office did not receive any written communications.
Okay, fine. Then at this time, I'll close the public hearing. It's seven.
May I just mention one thing before you close it? I just want to answer your question about the thirty feet for the, is that final that's at close?
We can, we can continue that after I close the public hearing. Okay, I'm closing the public hearing at seven oh eight. Now, you have a comment about your modification of your initial plan?
Yes, about that, thirty feet, as I mentioned here.
Please address the board, not the audience.
Okay. So the reason for the, it's for, it's when the car back up from the bay because we don't have any opening on the back, no garage door on the back. So everything is gonna be in and out from the south wall. So when they back out, it's kind of, it's it's hard to like to make that less less than that. And there is another, like, kind of a five feet of wack in front of the south wall.
Those five feet are what?
Wack, concrete wack.
Sidewalk.
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 Okay.
So that will make it about thirty-one.
Your plan is a little bit thin. It doesn't show some of these things. Like the overhead wires, the sidewalks. But there's a a five-foot sidewalk in front of the building?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a wack in front of the building.
All right, thank you.
Actually, Mr. Khalif, before you sit, if, and this may be, again, agreed, good reason for manager, owner to be here. Current building has two bays. Am I correct on that?
Yes.
With that being said, minimum parking spaces, three spaces per bay puts that at six spaces. Current spaces are now seventeen, give or take, correct? So by adding one bay, let's add five to that, puts us at twenty-two. Option one is marked at thirty-six spaces. Option two is marked at thirty-four. That seems like a lot of extra spaces, unless he plans on doing a ton of business that hasn't been there for the last decade. It seems like we could move that forward, squash some of those spaces. And the concerns about having cars parked right in front of the bay would be null and void. I think we could avoid all issues, keep the building facing the same way as option one, remove four spaces. He would have adequate spaces. He would have more than what he has now, adjusted with the additional bay. Thoughts and comments on that?
What are required parking spaces to your new building?
There's thirty-six, including three handicap, which only two would be required.
Okay. So it's if if we remove, then we have to remove we have to remove ten spaces?
We could move six spaces, still accommodate parking directly in front of the waiting office. That would give free and clear. We're at thirty-six foot nine. Additional nine to eleven, depending on how deep those spaces are. So that would put you at over forty feet between the bay door and the first bumper that you encounter on that south side of the double-walled parking. And it would only eliminate six spaces, which would put you at thirty spaces. And three, six, nine, average five employees. So fourteen spaces. It's still twenty-some cars that could be parked there for service. At no point in the last decade have I seen close to twenty cars parked at current business. So I think there's more than adequate space if you move that building further to the south and remove six of those spaces.
But that will reduce the parking that might be required for the plaza itself.
But that's not part of the plaza. That's, we're not worried about the plaza. The plaza is woozy-wazzy. That's just something that's in our imagination right now. Like you just said, he doesn't know what he's gonna do with it. Right now, we're looking at this property. We'll we'll deal with parking with that front property when it's demolished and the owner wants to move forward with it. But we can't be concerned with what's going to happen ten years from now.
I beg to differ. We need to be concerned with it because if we create a situation where they can't have that building because of lack of parking, then, you know, we've opened a can of beans. So we do need.
If this building stays.
What I'm looking at, though, is that the area, the amount of turning radius in front of that shop is much greater, even with that five-foot sidewalk, than the turning radius coming out of the parking spaces behind the Ford Road prop- or Ford Road building. And I don't know why you need that much turning radius. I mean, it doesn't take more turning radius to come out of a stall in the building than it comes out of a parking space.
It could be reduced. What I'm saying, it could be reduced. But like, we have like five feet wack. So that make it instead of three, six, nine, make it thirty, thirty-one, let's say thirty-one feet.
Thirty-one nine.
Thirty-one and a half. And let's say the regular driving aisle, twenty-four feet. So we can reduce it by six, seven feet. Reduce that and then bring the building.
If we chose to, we could substantially reduce the amount of variance that you're asking for.
Okay.
I have, I have some other things, so. Why don't you have a seat? We'll move on to ZBA members' discussion. I have a couple of questions to start off. First of all, doesn't this property require masonry wall at the back between the residents?
That is correct. The 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 variance is simple tonight.
I know, it doesn't concern the variance.
But but you are correct that as any kind of standard commercial development, there is a requirement for a six-foot masonry wall between commercial and residential property.
So to make your situation a little better, possibly, masonry wall would be required when it comes time for a site plan approval at the planning commission.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment to that? We talked about the masonry wall. That's what the Family Heating and Cooling has.
Yes.
So you would be coming off of Family Heating and Cooling wall.
Well, it would be going down the property line.
Well, that's what I'm getting ready to comment on. If you look at the property line, the masonry wall is right on the property line of me and Family Heating and Cooling. So you would eventually, if you extended it out, that's why I was wanting evergreens or arbivites. If you extend it straight out, you're shave, you're gonna have to shave off our arbivites. Because I'm, their growth is right on the property line. So you're gonna have to cut up my my arbivites to get it in there. So I would, that's why.
Well, that would, that would be a consideration. And it would, something that could be discussed at the time of the site plan. But some kind of either masonry wall or some kind of dividing structure would have to be put there between this property and your property.
FMA, about Chairman May.
I don't know how often you follow our meetings because they're, you know, every six months or so. If you can recall, when Kroger built their gas station, there was a little bit of back and forth about the stone wall and the wall going in there, and then what kind of landscaping lighting to be used. And one of the issues that came up was the headlights and the noise coming forward. And I know there was some, I don't know if you recall, there was some kind of a, I guess, happy medium that was found between the landowner to the south and Kroger parking of they kinda came to a happy. Because at first, it started off with a berm. Then we're gonna put up a wall. Now we're gonna add trees as well. And that's something that can be taken up with planning commission moving forward on the project. But just to keep that in mind, that we've had to tackle that before on other projects.
Okay, so my question would be at this point, then, if if how am I gonna get notified about what the plant, what your commission does of either approving option one or going with option two? And do I have an opportunity to do anything different? I mean, again, if you extend the concrete wall, if you just say, I, it's up to me and the homeowner.
We're not going to say whether they have to build a wall or not.
Okay.
That would be up to the planning commission after it gets to them. We, that's not part of our function here.
You have to decide on a variance first.
Yes.
The planning commission comes in behind that.
That's right.
Okay, that's fine.
They make the plan if, say, we were okay this. Their their mission is, okay, how are we going to implement it now that he's got the okay? What we're doing tonight is just simply, yes, you can move it, no, you cannot move it. And planning commission kinda controls everything else moving forward. We wanna see this, this, and this before you can put boots on the ground to start building.
Can you adjust the variance in this meeting? You know, like I'm saying, if it if it must be done, then move it eight more feet, and it would be thirty-foot variance instead of twenty-two.
Would that make you the landowner to to the north happy with eight feet? Would you do that? Would you be happy with eight feet variance?
We need, we need to keep it at such a level that we still have an approved width for that parking lane.
Well, I understand.
Correct.
Mario, is the compromise, if if that's what you are looking for, the compromise would be a thirty-foot variance. It still gives him plenty of turning radius. It doesn't affect his parking, unless you all wanna adjust the parking. I'm just concerned with the overflow of after you all are done, whether it's gonna be twenty-two or it's gonna be thirty. I would propose if it's gotta be a compromise, thirty feet, with a stipulation that I'm gonna go with the planning commission to, instead of putting up a stone wall, which don't look good at all, would be some greenery, which would look very good, and it'll it'll help a lot. Like I said, arbivites do a lot of protection right now.
That whole discussion has to come later.
The planning.
Right, that's right.
So you all are just gonna decide whether you're gonna go with no variance or you're gonna put a variance in there? gonna put a variance in there? Okay.
Yep, okay. Next, I'd like to, uh, talk to, uh, Mr. Ottega. Uh, I have some disagreement with your, uh, practical difficulty here. Practical difficulties are something that would prevent the property owner from using the property for what it's intend to, intended for.
Correct, yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Is not the property being used currently for what it's intended for?
It is being currently used as commercial. The, the, the point I was just making was that it could, there could be a minor interpretation that a practical difficulty exists because it's not being fully utilized for commercial development. So, and, and, and so that's why it's up to the ZBA to determine what is that fully deter, fully, full use that's comparable.
I'm not sure that that's... I'm not sure that there's a, any wiggle room there that says, you know, either it is or it isn't a practical difficulty. And if it is a practical difficulty, it's because of a self-created situation that they wanna build.
Well, no, because the, it's not self-created, the fact that...
It's self-created because they're tearing down an existing building that's fully compliant and putting up two buildings that aren't compliant.
Well, as proposed, what they're trying to do is, is, is have something that meets the intent of the setback by having a, a better screening method than what's promoted, promoted, because as you see before you, option two technically is in full compliance with his zoning ordinance. So technically, whether that is, is more...
Option two is, they didn't have to come before us with that.
Right, that's right. And so they're just, they, and he, the applicant did present to, uh, to me the both options, and they wanted to know if it was worth it to, to consider option one, just as an alternative, because that's their preferred alternative in terms of the way they'd like to operate. So whether they, whether they, whether they meet the criteria for approval, that's the reason they're here tonight, just to ask you if they think that, you think they meet that criteria. And so, once again, the practical difficulty situation regards, uh, you know, whether they, whether they meet, like, the full intent of, uh, whether they meet enough criteria of the zoning ordinance to warrant the variance. You know, we have fourteen different, uh, criteria that are, that could mean...
The main ones being, is it a practical difficulty, and is there substantial justice?
Right.
And as far as the substantial justice goes, this is a totally different situation than other, all of the other buildings that you mentioned going along Ford Road, because family heating, for one, is a planned development.
Right.
Uh, the other, uh, buildings that are closer to that and don't, uh, have that setback are not minor auto repair, so they're not required to have forty-foot setbacks.
Well, the, there is the auto repair that's at the corner of Brant and Henry, Branton Ford Road, although they might be, they probably are forty foot away from...
I think they probably have it because they've got a parking lot back there.
Yeah, they might be forty foot away. So once again, it's, it's, it's the idea that they're asking, they're here to, to request to see if they, they meet this criteria. Substantial justice in the end with regards to their, they've come to me before, actually, to answer some of the other questions with regards to how else they could develop this property. They've thought about other ways to develop the property, and now they're requesting this particular one. And it's whether that they have the ability to fully utilize this property in the way they'd like to, just as the way now the other property owners like to. Family heating and cooling is a PUD, but that's because they needed a, they, they require, and it's necessary for them to have a secure outdoor storage, but they're only one of three PUDs in the city. All other properties along Ford Road have been fully developed to the rear, uh, adjacent to residential, and that's one of the reasons we have our, uh, masonry wall requirement, because we know that the depth of, uh, commercial necessar, that the amount of land commercial properties need to be financially viable, uh, sometimes requires going all the way to the rear. So it's only, in terms of allowing them, uh, the ability to use their property, and granted, you know, if they're using it in this configuration, and if you feel that it doesn't meet that standard, then you're right, then, then you wouldn't have to grant it, but it's just that the alternative before you then would be just understanding that, that, uh, that they're willing to go for it, and maybe that demonstrates that they can fully develop it without a variance.
Remember, we have to represent the residents also.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, let's open it up to the board, uh, who has any comments or questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious that underneath that Plan One, Option One, we can extend, you know, we can shorten, you know, lengthen it up, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
If it was a possibility.
We could modify it, yeah.
Yeah.
We can apply it, but I just, I'm sort of confused, why'd they throw an Option Two at us when we'd had no options, you know, no thought of it before? And all of a sudden, is it just on top of your mind, and I'm sorry for you, because you're the guy...
I could get a chance to look at anything, you know?
Right. But it's just that we didn't, you know, if you could go this way, you could do just about anything once without any approval.
Well, not true. He not, he doesn't need approval from us.
That's what I'm saying, well, that's what I'm talking about, us, any approval.
Yeah.
From us.
Yeah, so as far as substantial justice goes, Option Two, it wouldn't even have to come before us.
Right, yeah. But then it's a matter of whether, you know, then technically it meets the, uh, all the ordinance requirements, but, yeah, it's like you said, it's a matter of whether the other criteria are applicable, that, that are enough to warrant a variance and result in the proposed development as is, and whether that proposed development is, meets the intent of the ordinance or not. You know, whether that, whether this proposed configuration, allowing the ordinance, allowing the property owner to develop it as proposed, if that's, uh, a better interpretation of protecting the residential by not having overhead doors facing, uh, westward towards Henry Rough, and then not having parking all the way up to the, the northern property line, no, not having any, uh, landscape buffer, because technically they're not required to have a landscape buffer, it's just the ma- masonry wall, they are required to have the masonry wall.
The way I'm looking at it, it's in a residential area as well as a commercial area, and if you go with Plan Option One, it's more relief for him, because if you go with Option Two, you're gonna have everything in your, everything in your backyard, basically.
I'd like what, and, wish your end, maybe also, you're, you're right where I'm at. If I could, if you were gonna approve whatever, I'd rather see approval of Option One.
But what I'm saying, if we can change the variance, you know, lengthen it, you know, I mean, you know, give him more depth away from his house, I mean, neither way they're gonna do this.
Right.
Homeowner has indicated he is willing to compromise at thirty feet also.
That's what I'm saying, the resident, and we're here for the residents.
Right.
For the businesses, we're here to make sure that things are right, and businesses like to do what they can do to get away, get more property use, one way or another.
Right, right.
And we're here for the residents, and I think Option One, in my opinion, at least we, we lengthened the distance from the property, that would still satisfy them, they'll lose some parking or whatever, but they can deal with that.
And actually, there could be some configurations that they wouldn't really lose the parking, because, um, one of the other issues that I noted on the site plan is that technically the proposed commercial building, the footprint of that commercial building is actually twelve feet away from, uh, well, I'm sorry, it's more like eight to ten foot away from the front property line on Ford Road. So there's other places in which the, uh, the lengthening could be reduced.
So that building could...
So that building could be scooted a little bit, correctly, it could be scooted a little bit further south, and then, as Fred, you mentioned it, uh, you know, the, the twenty-four foot aisle width is typically what's utilized for pulling in and out of a space, and it seems like that could possibly work. I mean, I'm not sure how deep the bays is and how, how much their, uh, their vehicles, how wide, long their vehicles usually are, but you'd think that there could be some additional, because if we're only looking for another eight feet, if you take four foot from the front of the building and four foot from that, uh, that thirty-six point fi, point nine, you could probably get that six to eight feet more to at least give that better, as you mentioned, Commissioner Price, you know, a little bit more of a sad distance. And then it allows them...
Well, if we added, if we move the building in the back up eight feet, that would make it about, that would give you a thirty foot, but then if we also move the front building closer to Ford Road by, say, five feet, then we're only...
Losing three.
Losing, is it three or five?
Three, if you go to five, you're losing three then.
Okay, then we're only looking at a three-foot variance instead of an eighteen-foot variance.
Right.
And it would seem to be, uh, much more manageable.
Mm-hmm.
May I say?
Yes, your comments, sir?
Um, if you see that driveway, the twenty-two feet wide driveway?
Yes.
There is a utility pole over there that, which is carrying major, uh, power lines, just to the south of it.
You're talking about the power line that goes right behind the building now?
Exactly. So if we move that building, if we move it to the south, the main building...
Then it's further away from the power line.
Well, actually, the driveway is gonna be, uh, like, the, the pole is gonna be within the driveway, so that's, that's the main reason for the allocation of the...
Okay, how close, how close to the driveway is that pole now?
That's five feet.
Five feet?
Yes.
So that's the five feet we're talking about? We could put, we could put that pole, say, a foot off of the driveway, rather than five feet, would that, is that acceptable?
Well, I don't.
I think it probably depends on DTE, I mean, I would think a foot probably would work, um, but then if you're only taking another five foot from that side, then you have five foot from the front, then you're probably looking, we're probably, might be back at, am I, would we be back at thirty feet?
There was actually one of my questions I was gonna get to, is that a distribution line or a service line?
I, I'm not sure, I'm not, with DTE, I'm not sure.
Yeah, because...
I mean, it's definitely not just a, a service line just to the property, it definitely...
So it'd be a four forty, a distribution line leading into the neighborhood.
Correct, it, I believe so, yeah. I mean, it goes, it's the same service line, the, it's the same line that continues westward behind all the properties on Ford Road, that, that line goes, because even if you go over to Shakka, the, the power line that's, that goes over on the Shakka, that's the same line. So I don't know if that would be considered a service line servicing individual property owners, or if that's some kind of transmission?
For potential purposes, for...
I guess, yeah.
Residential.
Well, residential, commercial, yeah.
Yeah, nothing crazy, but still more than tapping a squirrel line.
Yeah.
Right.
Commissioner May, I just wanna say something, even we reduce the, the curvature of the, the radius of that curb over there, I don't know if you can see it, due to the power, uh, utility line, so, um, utility pole, so, uh, honestly, being one foot away from the back of curb, it's gonna be very dangerous and might be, gonna be hit many times.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I would really like to keep it away at least five feet from, from the back of the curb.
Well, we don't wanna create a dangerous situation, that's true.
Can I ask a question here? You're, you're just trying to judge the variance at this corner, which is twenty-two, and pose Option One, and I have a compromise to make it thirty even, which affects nothing. I mean, it would affect the pole, it wouldn't affect anything, I mean, it's not, it's not like I'm trying to run the guy out of business, but, or not have a business, but we're only talking, uh, a small adjustment here of variance, uh, and it affects nothing. I mean, when you look at his, his radius, I mean, he's talking thirty-five point nine foot, I mean, you don't need thirty-five nine feet for a radius to get out of the bay window, bay doors.
No, we're not, we're not talking about that.
No.
We're talking about where the utility pole is behind the, behind the existing building.
Yes, I'm aware of where that, it, it affects nothing. If he's, if you're just making a judgment on the variance, and you said you're, and Commissioner Anthony said, we're not worried about when he tears it down and starts from scratch again, because that's, that's not our, that's not our subject at this time. I'm just asking to move the building basically eight foot.
Well, that's what we're already talking about.
Yeah.
He's talking about access from the driveway for the pole, utility pole, so...
Yeah, the eight foot wouldn't affect that pole at all.
That's what, yes, we're not talking about that.
It would...
Yeah, an eight foot would...
Anything in excess of the eight foot would make it closer to the pole.
Right, and, and reducing it, granting the additional eight feet to allow for thirty feet, then we're just, about the twenty-eight feet from the back of a parking space in the northern bay to the, the facade of the building, twenty-eight feet is, it's wider than our normal two-way drive, and, and actually, there really isn't a need, I would think, for a sidewalk in front of the, uh, the minor repair building, because you're gonna have overhead doors anyway. You know, chances are, people aren't gonna be walking along the perimeter of that building. It is necessary...
Well, I, I would assume there's a, a service door also.
True, yeah, that's true. So like, over on the, where the waiting and office area is, you're right, that needs a five foot, that needs a sidewalk there. The applicant is providing a seven-foot sidewalk in front of the commercial building, and that's necessary, because you need five foot for walking and two foot overhang for the, for the vehicles. So that way they, and you need that sidewalk, because they, so customers can walk back and forth. If it's a multi-tenant building, you know, if there's anywhere from two to seven tenants in there, they'd be walking back and forth along there. But it does seem like the thirty-foot, uh, position of the building from the property line could, could function?
Yes, it would function, yeah.
Could function on the site.
If I may, it, given the eight feet, that takes us to thirty off property line, the number that comes up in between front of, um, building right now and back bumper of parking space is thirty-six foot nine. After a little bit of super Googling while everybody was talking, average turning radius coming out for a ninety would be fourteen to seventeen and a half foot, so that still gives more than ample space, um, where my concern at first was taking those spots out, it still almost doubles, I mean, no...
I think there's plenty of turning radius.
Yeah, I don't think we're concerned with that anymore.
Yeah.
Just clarify for everybody to give them, to put a number...
Yeah, this would take it down to twenty-eight point nine.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, like, like you said, our normal two-way...
Drive aisle.
driveway is twenty-four.
Correct.
So we still got an extra almost five feet more than that, so there's, there's no shortage of space there. Well, other comments, uh, from the board?
On the front part of the, on the south side, you have a twenty-two foot driveway where you're expected to create the radius turn. If we were to give them the thirty-foot variance, and even with the five-foot sidewalk, it'd be a twenty-three foot radius you would need, so that's more than enough.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, going along with the homeowner and his desires and what the representative of the property owner has to say, I think we could, um, reduce the variance request to ten feet and keep everybody relatively happy, and still allow for the project to go ahead with the south-facing doors. The only concern I had with the black, or the blank wall in the back was that, uh, in the past, the city has required commercial buildings to have a rear exit, and that would have to be included, it wouldn't have to be a normally-used door, but something, uh, to provide emergency exiting in the back wall.
Yeah, that's correct. I, I'm not, I'm not familiar with, enough with the building code to know that, but you are correct, they, the, the construction of the building would re, would have to require compliance with all applicable safety codes.
Yeah.
So it might be that, but it might be something where planning commission could emphasize that that's an emergency exit-only door or something to that effect.
We could put on the west wall, on the west wall.
Or, or on the west wall.
Correct.
Can I ask a question here? You, you're talking about an egress door on a wood, wood wall.
Well, we're talking about an emergency egress door on the north wall.
On the north wall?
Yes.
That would be directly into my property.
Well, it would face your property, yes, but it would be thirty feet away from your property line.
Right.
And it wouldn't be something that is normally used for traffic.
Right.
It's only, for instance, if a truck runs into the front of the building, and they can still get out in the back.
Right, I, I get you, is it possible, or is it this commission's job to do that, putting the egress either on the west side or the east side?
Well, that's, it's not our function to require that, so that'll, that'll happen later.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with, uh, this?
Yeah.
Okay, someone wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to motion...
Used, reduced?
Like to make a motion, oh.
Just, just, just a reminder, um, to the commission that with the ZBA, um, any motion that you make, um, you need to support with, you know, details, um, well, if we're thinking along the lines of doing the ten-foot variance with thirty feet, um, you could say, you know, based on the findings of fact in Mario's letter, but put, I, what I put on there, because we've modified it, um, put a caveat on there, um, that it would provide substantial justice to both the applicant and surrounding property, so...
Like surrounding residences too.
Yeah.
Yeah, can mention, uh, practical difficulty and substantial justice.
Or minimi, minimizing impact on adjacent residences.
Pardon me?
Minimizing impact on adjacent property, so minimizing the impact on the resident?
Yeah.
In the relationship to Jason Houston.
Do we have a mo, a motion on the floor? Do you have a suggested motion?
So, I would, I would make, so if, if, it, if you, if you think the ten-foot variance is the way to go, I would say make a motion to approve a ten-foot variance based upon the findings of fact in the McKenna letter dated two twenty twenty-four, addressing, um, you know, agreeing that, it addresses practical difficulty... agreeing that, uh, it addresses practical difficulty, provides substantial justice to applicant and also to adjacent property owners.
Maybe thirteen-foot variance, though, correct? I want to make sure that...
It'd be a ten-foot.
Well, no, if we go, if we go with the thirteen-foot variance, we have to modify the, uh...
Because currently it's eight...
The entrance by the pole, and we're going to get close to the pole. The utility pole there. And everybody seems to be happy with the thirty-foot, rather than...
Right, so if we're taking eight out, the original was for an eighteen-foot variance, correct?
Right, yeah, so it'd be a ten-foot variance.
It's a ten-foot variance, thirty...
From, from the forty-foot standard, resulting in a thirty-foot building setback.
Make a motion to approve citing the findings of substantial justice and being concurrent with, uh, the applicant and current neighbor, um, to, or resident of the property affected, uh, and the findings that it would not deter future building or inhabitation of that property for a variance of ten feet in total.
From the setbacks, from the...
From the setback.
Yeah.
I second that.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions or comments on the motion? Would you read it back to us?
So... So it is a motion to approve a ten-foot variance with, which is a thirty-foot setback based upon finding of facts in the, just make sure that, in the McKenna letter dated two twenty twenty-four, providing, uh, addressing that the granting of such variance would address the practical difficulty and provide substantial justice to both the owner while not affecting the neighborhood characteristic of surrounding properties.
Okay, would you take roll, please?
Commissioner Richard?
Aye.
Commissioner Price?
Aye.
Commissioner Bullock?
Aye.
Commissioner Hickman?
Aye.
Chairperson May?
Aye. All right, ladies and gentlemen, the, uh, motion was passed to give you a ten-foot variance as opposed to the eighteen-foot variance that you originally asked for. And this will give you a thirty-foot setback. And any further, uh, work will come from the building department and the planning commission.
Do you want to get notified that, Chairperson, please? Or do you need to notify somehow of that?
So, so it, I don't believe that the site plan requires any kind of official public notification. But you can talk, contact me, and I will, uh, provide you notification accordingly.
Right, but I definitely don't want to see a separate wall, so...
Our, the planning commission meetings are generally the second Thursday of every month, so...
Second Thursday every month?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Okay, other business discussion. Have anything on first?
Actually, the only thing that might come up, I don't know if the applicant will turn his, uh, application in on time, but the, uh, corner bar, Coleman and Cherry Hill, has been attempting to provide a, uh, multifamily apartment building. And...
Again?
Yeah. They've been going through the planning commission review, and so they believe they have it close. So, but, but, once they have planning commission approval, it'd be contingent, if they receive, excuse me, if they receive planning commission approval, be contingent on them obtaining variances. So it's, it's still up in the air, but in theory, he could be coming before you.
They realize we're only semi-annual, right?
We'll see him next year.
That's right. Well, yeah, well, depending on how he's working, yeah, we might see that, it might be that long.
Yeah, they, well, they, they want a lot of things.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Can I say something about this, guys? I held my, I held my nose to vote for this tonight because what I hear about this guy's behavior, he sounds like a terrible, uh, business citizen in this city. And, uh, I, I had to vote for him in spite of that, and I did not like doing it. And I hope the city is all over him like a sweat.
So do I. And a lot of times we've got to bite our tongues. I've been in that position, and it stinks, but, yeah, I, I one hundred percent feel ya.
Sorry for you going through all that. You just came in, you know, that's the fact, we had this all planned.
And only the females are there, like, they do crazy things, you know, and...
With no help.
But that's a, that's, that doesn't affect this issue, right? So they're not the easiest neighbors, but, yeah, negotiating, still, in negotiating, I have no idea.
Chairperson May, if you want to advise...
Might want to, uh...
Before, you know, here to have a side conversation.
Yeah, you probably can't adjourn or make more comments.
We didn't pay so much.
Okay, uh, the next regular zoning board meeting will be, uh, as needed.
That's correct.
Meeting's adjourned.
No motion, no, no any motion, the meeting is adjourned. We can't just wrap it. No motion, no adjourn.
All in favor.
I second it.
Motion's carried.
Yeah, you forgot that little part.